Welcome to the Moore City Council, it's now five thirty. Can everybody stand for the pledge of reason?
Ready.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With thou, O God, we pledge allegiance and praise you once again for this gathering. And, O God, we ask you, O God, to allow your will to be done this evening, O God. That's all that needs to be accomplished, that is to be accomplished, O God. Let's each and every council member, each and every individual in this room, let's them, keep them, and protect them, and give them glory, honor, and all of the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We're gonna go to amendment, special meeting agenda. Please silence all electronic devices, and courtesy of those in audience, thank you. We'll go to SS dash one, conduct, and meeting, and expectations. Mr. Olson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So, Mayor Neal asked for a special meeting tonight just to kind of get the newly electeds and our newly seated council together to go over the conduct and the expectations that we would like to agree to and have in our council chambers going forward. So, it's kind of an open discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Do we need to roll the association form?
Roll call.
It's a roll call.
We can.
No, okay. Good luck, boys.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Lyons?
Here.
Mayor Proton, Billingsley?
Here.
Mayor Neal?
Here. Thank you. Okay, I was trying to prolong it, wait for city attorney, she's gonna be about ten minutes. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and join anyway. You gotta have faith. Okay. I need to ask you, not sure if you've ever talked about this before, why did we change from Roberts rules to Rosenberg rules?
So, the council adopted the Rosenberg's rule of order back in April of twenty eighteen as part of the council code of conduct handbook. I believe it was at the request of the city attorney. The Roberts rules are a little bit archaic and they're outdated and a lot more complicated than the Rosenberg's rule of order. So, it was adopted in resolution twenty eighteen dash seventeen. That was part of the handbook that made Rosenberg rules our parliamentary procedure for council.
Do we have any other cities? I'm noticing I got some response on Rosenberg, some other cities didn't even hear about today. That's why I was asking, which, any other cities using Rosenberg?
I know it's the newer version of the two. I've been in meetings where Rosenberg's been used, not with other cities, but with other formal meetings that require the, you know, follow the ground act and have to have parliamentary procedure. But other cities, I could not say specifically. I have to get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Well, why I call this meeting council, why I call this meeting, it was for a refreshers course, basically, council members, old council members as well as new council members. It was going to be for introduction for the new council and looking at the rules and how to run a city council efficiently. And so, what the word is, I wanna run this, we don't wanna look as if we don't know what we're doing up here. And the new council, they don't know, and I want them, we're just getting the Rosenberg, but about eight months ago now, huh?
Yeah, about eight months ago. May I?
Yes, sir.
May I speak, please? Rosenberg rule of order, I mean, California League of Cities, they posted it, it's something that is taught at the new mayor, new city council member meetings when they have in Sacramento. So, they do, they do train it, and they do train people on that. And the other thing is, I wanted to state is, is we don't have all five council members here. So, if I may recommend that, because, you know, you mentioned about this was gonna be for the, the old council, the existing, you know, and then the new council, I like it. I mean, to me, I think that all five council members should be present. So, a recommendation would be, is to, 'cause this is a study session, is to table the study session until the next meeting, so when all five council members are here, so we can discuss it, so everybody's here to hear this. Because if, unless, unless we're just gonna go over what's on this piece of paper and not make any changes, okay? Because my recommendation would be is, once again, we wouldn't wanna have every council member here, so everybody understands our way forward. That would be my, that's my recommendation. If you have any questions, I'll be willing to.
Okay. Questions I have is moving forward, and moving forward sometime takes, if they can't be here and they've been asked to be here, like we all have, it's time for us to move forward and not fix around on what's holding us back. Sometime we'd be dragging our feet and dragging our feet and kicking the can down the road. My head, I don't have time, I've got to move, I'm getting too old. And so, that's where I'm at now, so I think we're gonna go ahead and...
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
If I may. I understand that, but I don't know the reason why Councilmember Blair's not here. I don't know if she can make the next meeting, is it because she's out of town, which is, I really, my thing is, is I, I hear what you say and I understand that you're talking about, you know, the can, kicking the can down the road. I don't think I'm trying to do that. I think I'm just trying to do this as to where, if we're gonna have rules as a body, everybody has to, I mean, this is open, this is a study session for discussion. And I'll just leave it at that, but it's, you know, I put a motion, motion on the table, table it, and it's up to council, the council wants to do, and then we go from there.
Quick question, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Are there any changes that you foresee right now that you wanted to make to Rosenberg's?
No, I just, maybe I should ask for clarification then. Let me back up and ask for clarification. The clarification is, Mr. Mayor, is it to just review Rosenberg's rule of order tonight, or is it to discuss ways forward to make our meetings better? What is, was the, what is the reasoning? I mean, I heard the conduct of the meeting and the expectations, I'm not trying to beat this thing to death. My thing, although, at the end of the day, if, if, if it's just to go over these, go over these rules, I guess I'm okay with it. I pull my, I pull table in it. But if it's to, we're gonna discuss any changes, changes to our current procedure and to our, you know, our rules of, that we already have established, then I guess I'm, I guess I really, I'm having a problem understanding what, what, you called the meeting, okay, what, is it just, is it just to go over these rules?
Yes, it is, but I'm gonna say this before we keep prolonging this. You wanna put a motion in the table?
I had a question on the table, I wanted you to clarify the reason why we're doing this.
Clarify the reason.
Could, earlier you stated, earlier you stated that, you know, it's for bringing the old council and the new council on board. I just, I just, is it, do we just to read, just to go over these rules? I'm not trying to prolong it either. I left it for clarification so I can understand. So, are we looking just to go over the rules, if that's fine, then how we move then? Or are we looking at to go further and change existing rules and add new rules?
No, we're looking to go over the rules. We're gonna, we're gonna go over the rules, the regulations, and knowing how to run a council, and having our new council come in and put their inputs on it, and we're not gonna have what we have, community addressing a particular council member, and we, I'm here as the mayor, letting it go on and letting it go on. I wanna put a stop to that. What we doing, we're moving on, and right now, that's why we have a new council, and right now, it's all about will and order.
Well, if I may, I apologize.
Right now, either you're gonna put, we're gonna, either we're gonna counsel me around what we're gonna do right now, we're gonna move on and, and get this out the way.
Well, if I may, just make one more recommendation. I, this is a study session.
Go ahead.
If, if I'm not allowed to talk during a study session, then I'm just gonna keep quiet.
No, go ahead, sir.
Okay. The other thing, too, is we also have rules already established on meetings. I think though, if we're gonna go over Roberts rule of order, we should go over all those other, I'm just saying.
Rosenberg, maybe?
A Rock Rosenberg, which is, is the watered-down Roberts rule, but I'm thinking, oh, too.
Okay.
Okay. I'm thinking, if I may, that we also go over all the rules that pertain to our meetings and council conduct. I mean, is this a yes?
Thank you.
Okay, I pull my table.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, after reading the table contents, do you guys have anything to address to the city manager or to me?
Steve, choose that?
No, I've, I've read the introduction, and it gives a pretty good summary of why the rules were drafted in the first place and Rosenberg rule came out, so I don't necessarily have any, any questions about that, and I believe that Nathan gave a good summary of that as well.
Thank you. Proton, Mayor.
So, in my conversations with the mayor, it really, my takeaway was why we were coming together tonight was to just kind of remind ourselves and remind our constituents out there and our residents that we do have a code of conduct, and that it's my belief, my personal belief, as Councilmember Lyons mentioned, the other meeting that he was gonna hold this mayor accountable to holding us to a standard. And I think that's what we're here about, is really just to say we have a code of conduct, we're not gonna allow the elders, we're not gonna allow all the yelling and the cross-talk and try to maintain order within our chambers, and just kind of get a head nod maybe from our sitting council members, that yes, we can agree to behave and represent the city in the light it deserves to be represented, myself included. To me, that's why we're really here, just a reminder and to recommit to this community that what we're here for.
Absolutely. Okay, as we go on, please refer to the cheat sheet behind, in the back, we got the cheat sheet, yeah? And we're gonna go to that.
They don't have one.
They don't have one, okay.
That's not actually part of the Rosenberg's orders, this is something that was adopted by our city.
Can you find a way we can get something to that? I just talked to the city manager, we're gonna get something to the public if you guys want one of the Rosenberg rules. Okay, thank you.
Tom, if you can find it online.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Now, I'm gonna, before I go in further, can I open it to the public for somebody wants to talk about something? I'm opening it to a public comment.
Tom, eight to ten sixty-four, I have a little more. As far as kicking down the road thus far, as I seem remember, this item was on a previous study session at council, so it's already been kicked down the road once. I would like to address not necessarily the Rosenberg rule of order, but just another item that's on every agenda of the council meetings, and that is the council members' reports and requests. Now, in my, my mind, reports and requests is a time for just that. You're gonna give a report of what you've done, and you're gonna make requests, and it's not a time for discussion, as the city attorney will tell you, you can't, it's not on the agenda, you can't discuss it. Reports and requests is not a time for one council member to address another council member. There should be no reason why you'd call another council member's name during reports and requests. There should be no reason for a council member to interrupt another council member. It's just that, reports and requests, if we stick to that, that eliminates a lot of back and forth, 'cause that's what happens. Freeseman. Also, as, I'm trying to remember something, but I'll get back to it, but along those lines, as mayor, you have that gavel, and it becomes incumbent upon you to use that gavel if someone on the council or in the audience is out of order. So, keep it, keep it on hand. Anyway, if I think of what I forgot, I'll be back. Thank you.
Christian Christy, over there. So, my issue is, we've all been sitting through this, wrong year now, my part, as embarrassing as it is. What are the consequences? You keep, we have these rules, these rules, you are supposed to be abiding by the laws of the state of California to run this city. And that is what is so shocking, is how much dysfunction has gone through for so long. What are gonna be the consequences? We all have, we follow the rules every day. Nobody enforces consequences. We try to recall, it was a very difficult thing to do, there was ten, fifteen of us that worked our tail top. But what are the consequences? What are you guys gonna do to get order? That's what I'm asking. This study session should be based on what are you gonna do as a team to make sure that we, as the public, don't have to experience this any longer?
Excuse me. Can you come back? I need questions. It's okay. I enjoy hearing you, and we do hear you, but I can tell you and I can assure you, every one of these council members up here, they did everything in their power from talking to our city attorney, and what is the consequences, what we can do. I'm not gonna sit back and say, since somebody is out of control, I wish I could say, since you're out of control, can you please leave? I can't do that.
But see, that's sad, because if I am, that's his job.
Yes.
Is, and that is everyone, if your job, it's for you to pick that and say, you know what, she needs to go, she's out of control.
Absolutely, but here it is, she's an elected official, she's not the community. And the thing about it, I, I, I just thank God for seeing you for some reason.
County, I apologize for being late. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus. Can you finish this off, she got some good questions, but I told her about elected official, it's not the same as a community person.
There is no doubt.
And the city of Shafter follows Robert's rules of order and also the other. They follow both of them, they're guidance, that's all it is, is guidance. It's, it's the way the state of California says, this is what allows you to do what you do. And sadly, it's, is that you're having to go back now and you're sitting in that chair. You should've already had that guidance before anyone got in that chair. That's just my, my feelings.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I remembered what I forgot. When I get up here to speak, I noticed the light hasn't come on tonight.
You got about three minutes.
Thank you. We are limited to three minutes, and normally when I get up and speak during public comment, that's not gonna be a problem. Three minutes is adequate, and I prepare what I have to fit within that time limit. Thanks for the green light. But, and my follow-up on the reports and requests, perhaps we need to limit council members to three minutes, or four minutes, or five minutes.
Time's up.
Pitch a timeframe. I mean, if they, if it's a report request, they should be able, any one of you should be able to report what you have in a short period of time and not drag it out. And if, they may not be able to do it legally, but if during the reports and requests, a council member needs to say something that's not a report request, they can come from behind their, come to this podium during the public comment and say what they wanna say. We had a previous council member that did that a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Back to the council.
I'd like to ask, if I may, ask, is, is there any regulation on reporting? Sorry, my turn is on, apologize. City attorney, is there any, anything that we know of that, that we, why we could not limit council members, or is that something we could put in a resolution, or, I'm just curious, or is that just not good practice? I'm just curious.
Yeah, typically with the rules, and in fact, your current rules of procedure, require council to basically stay on topic, be succinct in their comments, questions, et cetera. To put a time limit on it may be restricting free speech rights of a council member, it may be impugning upon the council member's ability for legislative action or inquiry, but it certainly needs, you know, the rules you can allow with the forum, and if it gets off-topic, or if it gets too long, you can ask them to, you know, get to the point, or those types of things, those types of actions can be done by the chair.
Thank you.
Okay, can you guys go to chapter eight? I think that's on page twenty-one.
You said?
A Rosenberg, uh...
You said? Chap?
Chapter eight.
Council, I believe you're referring to the council rules of procedure?
I didn't bring mine today. I didn't know I had one. What page was that being, please?
Page twenty-one.
Thank you.
I think we're here, we're almost done, I'm ready.
And just, counsel, excuse me, Mayor, the, there are copies for the public here tonight if they wanna copy.
Thank you. Okay, if you guys can take a moment to look at chapter eight and read page twenty-one
If some of you in the audience are curious what, what we're reading right now, we're reading a call to order by the mayor, we're reading a roll call and attendance, order of discussion, oral communications from the audience, forum call, obtaining the floor, and motions, so. Took a little bit, took a little bit of time, sorry about that, but it's almost done.
All communications of the audience, if you can follow on D, page twenty-three. To attorney, I'm adjusting this to attorney. Are all statements allowed from the public?
All statements within the jurisdiction of this council, yes. Unless it is somehow violative of another law.
Thank you. If we can go all the way down to F, obtaining the floor, I'm asking this to the council. I would like to request a raising of a hand. For instance, if Dave Brown, Councilman Dave Brown has his hand up, and he's expounding on something, on a question, how could that would be speaking? And Councilman Stuart Lyons interjects and interrupts him. We don't want that, we want him to finish what he has to say, and then we're asking, Councilman Dave Brown, you done? And when he say, yes, I am, then I'm gonna move on, the chair's gonna move on, and if Stuart Lyons has his hands up, I'm gonna say, go ahead. Now, if there's a motion taking place at that time, like say for instance, say for instance, Proton Mayor Billingsley wants the motion on Dave Brown, I can't get that motion until I hear what Councilman Lyons has to say. Do you understand why I'm going with this? Go ahead.
No, I was just practicing.
I know, it's like high school, you know? Head start, teacher? Anyway, it stops your confusion, you know, you know, you have two people going back and forth, going back and forth, and everybody's like, okay, when is it gonna stop, you know? Hit the popcorn out, you know? So, what I wanna do is I wanna stop that, I wanna get some, we, we need to have some transparenting on learning how to conduct ourselves in public, so that's what that is. Now, not only I'm looking for that, what, why I brought this up is, I'm looking for consensus from the, from the council. Can I do that?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Sometimes if you have your head turned, I might, but this is what I asked earlier, 'cause we don't have all the council members here. And obviously, I, I wish that all five council members could be here and go over this. This is a study session. Once again, I mean, I don't wanna kick the can down the hallway or prolong this any further, but this is extremely, extremely important. It's important to me that we, you know, if, if we're going to do things, if we're going to have discussions like this, instead, I mean, once again, and I'll leave it at that.
Go ahead. I have a quick question. All members of the council received this, when it was changed from Roberts to Rosenberg's? Did everybody sign it?
Was it received by everybody, or do you agree upon it?
It, it was received, it was at a public meeting, I believe, I would have to check the records, but I believe all council members were present at the time. But I do believe that it was not approved unanimously, but it was approved by the majority of the council, and therefore it takes effect even if there are people that oppose it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One other thought, as to signing, the only, the rules, the procedures aren't signed, but there is a section at the back of the procedure regarding council conduct, which is asked to be signed as far as acknowledgement of receipt, that has not been signed by every member of this council, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, is it, does it take a motion or what would it take for consent?
To... To...
Consent, um, see if we can do that.
You cannot take any kind of formal action to change the rules tonight because it was not agendized that way. It's agendized that it's a study session.
Thank you.
So, action cannot be taken. You can certainly have consensus of council to direct staff to do something or to come to some kind of agreement of how you're going to do something in accordance with what the rules say currently. You cannot change them without an action item. So, if you wanna change the rules, you'll need to bring that back at another agenda, another meeting in an agendized form for action.
Okay.
Um, if you just wanna discuss about how you're going to implement the current rules, which you're kind of doing by saying, "I'd like you to raise your hand," that's fine, you can get some concurrence by council. But, um, it doesn't say, currently, the rules don't say that you have to raise your hand. What the quote rules say is that the chair will acknowledge a speaker and that speaker will have the floor. That speaker may ask their questions even of another council member. That council member, the other council member can choose to respond or not.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't, doesn't, um, change who has the floor. So, for example, Mayor, if you had the floor and you asked Councilmember Brown a question, then Councilmember Brown could choose to answer you or not, and you still have the floor until you, as mayor, acknowledge someone else has the floor. Now, whether if you wanna do that by raise a, you know, sign of hands or, "Mayor, I'd like to speak," however you would like to do that, you can certainly get confirmation from council members that they will do that for you. Uh, but if you wanna put that in writing as, and you have to raise your hand, that would have to be an action item. Does that answer your question?
Answered, answered, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation that, you know, 'cause this is extremely important. Once again, is that, uh, 'cause this is a study session and it's talking about the rules. So, I know, it's been a while since we've had one, but we have new council members on board, that we have a, a staff council member meeting, uh, that we normally, I think the last one we had was two years ago, to where we all come in and we discuss things like this, rules. This is just, 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 just a thought, so, uh, something, uh, and then, because I, I think this is something that we should go over often.
Mm-hmm.
It's very important, uh, but, once again, um, um, I just wish all five council members were here.
I understand it.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Make a statement? Uh, and just for clarification purpose for the public, when, um, Councilmember Brown is referencing that the staff and council meet to discuss these things, it isn't open agendized meeting. It is not behind closed doors or in, in the back room or something like that. So, just for clarification purpose, that is always agendized, it's usually agendized as a council retreat.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a concurrence? How would you guys wanna look at that or?
From, from what I'm gathering, may I? We have the Lemoore City Council Rules of Procedure, which references Rosenberg's rules. Regardless on, on what we do tonight, that's not gonna change anything, is that correct?
That's correct, you cannot take action tonight, it's only a study session for discussion and direction if, if you choose.
Okay.
So, can we get direction, what would I get the direction by staff?
Uh, council has the ability to direct staff, uh, to bring it back, to do research, to make modifications. It's at council's leisure.
I'd, may I?
Yes.
I'd like, um, to make a recommendation that, that, uh, that we, uh, look at scheduling a, a summit or a meeting, our joint meeting, it's open to the public. And these are the things that we go over, gives us everybody time to look over these more in detail. Uh, determine whether, you know, if, um, and, uh, have our joint meeting. Joint meeting with staff and with, 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 uh, with council. Uh, I don't... I think, I think the rules are pretty tight, it's just more understanding in our, on our, in our procedures. I do agree that we have the Rosenberg, this does reference Rosenberg, uh, and, uh, but, um, I just think the more we sit down and discuss it, I think it's worth taking the day or a couple hours during that day and sitting down and discussing it some more. This is one of the things we discuss. So, I don't know if it's appropriate this time to, to, uh, ask council to direct city manager to, to look at setting up a date to, uh, move forward, uh, and bring it back as an agenda item.
Yeah.
Uh, to move forward with a possible date in the future that we all can attend. Uh, just a thought, what do you, what do you guys think?
What do you guys?
I, uh, I agree with Mister Brown, uh, up until he said about a full day, this stuff, uh, I think we threw it in a couple hours, so... Uh, but, but I agree, I, I think that making it mandatory for all council members, excuse me, uh, to be there is something I'd be more interested in, if not, let's postpone it and find a time when all council members can be there.
So, would it also be an option that staff just comes back with the bullet points during a regular scheduled meeting? It seems it's easier to get all the council members here on a regular scheduled council date and do a study session where we actually have somebody from staff bullet point it and have it out.
Absolutely. What do you guys think?
Agreed.
May I, may I make a suggestion, instead of a study session, you could also do it as a new business item to review the rules and determine suggested changes if council wants to do it. It would be a longer, knowing it would be a longer new business item, that's also an option for council.
I think, hey, that's clever, new business item. What do you guys say?
I, if I may, real quick.
Mm-hmm.
If I may, 'cause, uh, and I know it doesn't have to do with, uh, well, to proceed, 'cause we did talk about that, that special, you know, that meeting, uh, where staff and council gets together, but there's other things that happens during that time too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I don't wanna forget that because there's other things that would be discussed, that would be a great benefit. So, if we still do this, that's fine, but then, I guess at a later date, I'll bring that back up, that we actually have that meeting, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
So, um, either which way you wanna go and then we'll, we'll add to later.
So, I, I was throwing options out there for y'all, but, uh, for the, for the sake of the public, I think it might be better to do it at a council retreat than here in the meeting. Just saying, like, 'cause to a lot of people that don't have to pertain to these, that could be kind of a...
Annoying.
It might be a little boring for...
Sure.
And, and for, um, council, uh, new members' information, as well as the public, those council retreats have included, um, reports or information, um, economic development, brainstorming, um, I'm trying to think what else we've done there, um, trainings by myself on different topics, um...
Roles and responsibilities.
Roles and responsibilities of council members, ethics trainings, Brown Act training, those types of things. I think Amy's been to one of them.
Okay, well, I think we...
May I get consensus from that?
We don't have to. Okay, can we get a consensus from the council?
Get a consensus, council to have that, what did you call that meeting?
Council retreat.
Council retreat. Uh, schedule a day and, uh...
I concur.
I concur.
Any of you?
You guys?
Yeah, agreed.
Agreed.
Okay.
As long as it ain't all bad.
No, not all bad.
Okay, can we go to chapter nine?
But the main thing you need on that is for everybody to show up, right?
Amen. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because if not everybody shows up, then we're gonna run into the same problem, right?
Um, yes, but, well, maybe not the same problem, because the thing is, is if we do and if that, if, if everybody doesn't show up, even if I don't show up or you don't, or one of us others don't show up, then what we've done is, is we schedule it out. It's gonna be something, it's just not gonna be the next day, this was a special, this was twenty-four hour notice. Uh, so, this would be something that would be scheduled out in the calendar. We might have even more people show up in the public, uh, we're gonna have an agenda and things of that nature. So, I understand your concern.
No, no, that's just what, kinda what I'm getting at, 'cause we could've done that if everyone was here today.
Absolutely.
We, I, I don't know, I don't have the answer to that right now, I don't, honestly.
No.
Because this is a study session and the only thing we can do in a study session, in a study session...
You can, you can discuss the item that's listed, you can direct staff, you can get...
Consensus.
Consensus, you can get, um, community input, um, that's basically what you can do. And, and you can take action in a study session, you generally do not. And you would have, but you would have to agendize it that way, and this has not been agendized that way.
Okay, you have something to say?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, before we move any further, I don't wanna jump too far ahead, but are we gonna talk about, uh, possibly looking at, uh, some of the consequences for violating the rules? We have them in front of us. And Janelle, you were not here, uh, for that, you were running a little bit late, but Miss Crizio asked a, a great question, and that, okay, we got the rules, we know what they are, now what are we gonna do about it? Is there anything we could do? So, Janelle, if you could answer that for Miss Crizio, I'd really appreciate it.
Um, council has certain options, um, they can, um, if a council member is not following their own procedures, they can publicly admonish them, they can privately admonish the individual, you know, a discussion with them, ask them to do, follow the rules, uh, either publicly or privately. Uh, council has the option to censure council members for failure to follow the rules. Um, you can, um, generally, there's, potentially, there is an action for what's called core warranto, which is you ask the attorney general to, um, take action against an individual who has done something wrong. Typically, that involves the breaking of a law. Um, usually it's not just for violating procedures, unless it's repeated violations of the Brown Act or something like that, because that has a criminal sanction to it. And, um, those are generally and typically the consequences of council's failure to follow rules. Now, there may be other legal actions that a council might be able to take depending on the facts, but those would have to be individually evaluated, and I wouldn't want to get to that, into that in open session. At this, i- if you're asking me to evaluate the current situation, I wouldn't wanna get in that.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Now, let me go back, now, what you just said, I think every council member heard, but some folks can receive it from a council member, they're, they can receive it from you. Basically, what can we do? We just, you just told us what we can do, and basically, it's nothing. Okay? So, it, here it is. You wanna know what it is? No, we're not sitting back twiddling our thumbs, not at all. But we go to her and we ask her, "What can we do?" I went, well, I went as far as, "Can we do something, boot them out, what can we do?" No. Then, our city council be, they have a lawsuit on us. So, I'm not gonna jeopardize our city council to be bold and make somebody happy by saying, "Yeah, we don't need you here, you're, you're, you're disturbing, you're not even, you don't even need to be up here, get out of here." I can't do that. Even though they can say any and everything and you just, oof! You have to just deal with it until they have the next election. That's all I have to say, go, go ahead.
Mister Mayor, may I say something? Well, what we can do, if I may, what we can do is, is, is called censor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and what that does is, is what happened back some years ago, uh, there was a situation, and the court said that if the city of Lemoore would have... Would have, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Would have, uh, stated, uh, that they did not agree with that person's opinion, that they would not have been liable, okay? We come till today. Today, uh, what you can do is, 'cause what you're doing is, is you're protecting the city, okay? And you're, I'll leave it at that. So, censor is, is not, is, is, is something that is, that is what we have to do, what we, what we have in our, in our tool belt. So, to me, that, I don't take that lightly when we do that. That is, that is ginormous when we censor somebody, uh, and I'll just leave it at that. Uh, so, and that's about all, you know, then it goes to the public, what's the public wanna do? I know there are some mentions up here, recall, you know, was talked about. That's between that council member and the public, the way I understand it. That's not between this, this, this body here and that council member.
Get, council, that is an election matter and the council cannot use city funds to, um, discuss or participate in an election matter. So, council could not legally be, be a part of a recall.
So, okay.
Additionally, ju- one other thought, uh, council, sorry, uh, Councilmember Stuart Lyons, excuse me. Um, the, um, council can also take control of the meeting, as you have with your distractions, asking for decorum, asking for people to speak briefly or whatever. You can take a recess if it's, that's not happening, you have those tools in your belt as well to conduct your meetings. But, um, in general.
Councilmember Lyons?
So, it's just an idea, um, we're talking about it. Um, I feel like we give everybody up here a free platform to broadcast their views and opinions through Facebook Live. I don't know, I was just kinda wondering if we could remove that.
Okay.
Tom Reed, I have a question on...
Hold on.
Okay.
Open to the public.
I have a question about agenda items, and I know this is a study session, not a real council member, but the agenda item today is on the conduct, procedures, if you will, the specifically Rosenberg's rules of orders. And I think this discussion has strayed from that. Am I correct then in saying that this discussion that has been going on recently doesn't follow the agenda?
I'm gonna liberally construe this to be conduct of meetings, and so if it relates to the, how a meeting is run, I'm, that, I think that discussion is okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Come on up. State your name, address, city, where you're from.
Uh, Michael Day, twenty-five Devond Drive, Lemoore, California.
Thank you.
Um, another idea, um, that I have not really heard this evening or, um, and it sounds super simplistic, um, and I know from experience, personal experience, that, and just in my own life, that it's been, it can be difficult to enact. But, um, you do have some, some new members, um, so therefore it's a new dynamic for the group. But this, there is one constant, y'all want what's best for the city, for the people, for the development of it. So, I would encourage y'all just to find a way to share that, that genuine intent to work together for what is best for the city. Once that's shared and that's known amongst each other, it makes working together way easier.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
Anybody else in the public wanna expound on this? See, there's none. Back to the council. We go, can we go to chapter nine? A, General. Read over it a little. Read over it a little.
Mister Mayor, would you like me just to read this out loud, so everybody can hear it?
No, no, okay. Why I'm having them read it, if they didn't read it, I'm about to move forward.
Copy, got it, thank you. I didn't know for the public.
If that wasn't the case, uh, it's council request and deal with policies issues in council requests that may be construed, the direction of shall be directed to the city manager, except for general requirements and requirements of questions in which case, uh, council may go to the Department of Directors or key staff in the city manager office. Council members may also deal directly with the city attorney or other staff appointed to the council. Meaning, if you wanted to get the whole story, the whole stew, meaning, we don't go without going to our city manager, go to one of the staffs and ask how our city manager's doing. That's not, we don't have that to do. We don't go to one of the guys that's on the trucks and say, what do you think about our city manager? How does that make our city council look? This is what this is talking about. Okay? All right. If we can... Now, I wanna talk about this real quick. Number one, we're done. This, we're almost done, you guys. Just deal with me here, we're gonna leave. If the council is talking to our city manager about something, three questions we could deal with him asking, or she's asking. But when you asking the city manager sixteen, seventeen, seventeen questions, and it's lasting about twenty, thirty minutes, and people scratching, getting locked jaw, because they wanna go home, it's because we should go to our city manager, or be given a phone call. What do you think about this? I'm looking at this, and can you give me some input on this? That's, no, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, that's what they say. Now, when you do that, there's communication there now. There's transparenting there, and that will stop a lot of things. So, uh, I'm just asking if you guys can say one or two questions when you ask the question. Don't stay there all day with the city manager, asking him a hundred questions. That's why I just want, I just, that's just my input.
Could I?
Yes.
May I? Are you talking about at, at, at council meetings here, or are you talking about if...
At ca- council meetings.
Okay. Wholeheartedly agree with that. Wholeheartedly agree with that, because if you read your, if I may?
Go ahead.
If you read your agenda, if you have questions, you know, you, that's when you reach out, if I'm not mistaken, that's when you reach out to the city manager, and even the city attorney if needed, and then you get those questions answered, okay? But you get an agenda, you should read it. If you have questions, and if then those questions cannot be, I agree with you a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, two. Do the council have any procedure, uh, any questions about the procedures we've been reading so far? Okay, last question. Okay, I see a hand out. Open to the public.
So, you freely say, call the attorney. It bothers me, 'cause I happen to know, working for a city, how much that costs. Why is there not a procedure in place for council members before they pick up the phone and they call the city attorney? It just costs the city and our budget, out of our budget, five, six hundred dollars? Why is that not discussed with at least one council member, i.e. the mayor, before that takes place? 'Cause it could be, something could be solved before five hundred dollars comes into play?
Absolutely. Good question. Go ahead.
I would just direct council not to be having meetings outside of an agendized meeting, so it becomes problematic when council members discuss amongst themselves matters that should be agendized in a public meeting. I'm not saying they can't do it amongst two of them, but the moment a third person gets in that conversation, whether by relay, or, um, by, you know, one of those two members calling them and asking them a question, then I, now I've got an issue, a different issue, which is a Brown Act violation of this council, and that's my job to pretty sure that doesn't happen. I'd also like to point out to the public that the only two people, the, the only two employees this council employs is Nathan and myself, so, that's why they have the right to call me, but I understand the budget issues.
All right, thank you.
Mister, may I just say something real quick? 'Cause I just wanna make sure it's clear, uh, I, that I, only time I would contact a city attorney is if, if, if there was a grave question, and I couldn't get the answers from city manager, or we had question. Uh, that is done very infrequently. And only if needed, and I, I fully understand the costing. Even the city manager's time is costing the taxpayers money, too, so, uh, oh, I, I just recommend that, that, you know, read and reread the agenda, you know, try to find the answers in there. At the last, you just can't find the answer, then ask the question, uh, so we're prepared when we do come to the council.
And council, I do, for the public's knowledge, I don't get very, very many calls. I have received calls from council, but I don't get very many, and they're not very long, when they, when I do receive calls, so...
Okay, I, I wanna say this. This is the last thing I'm gonna expound on. I was, I put something on Facebook today, saying that we were gonna have a, a study session, and it really bewildered me to see that. I wanted this study session, what we're gonna do to better our city, the ones who live here, and the ones who live here now, but this is our city. You don't ever wanna make your city, or run your city down. And when I seen that somebody posted, this was, it was blogged that this was for Holly Blair, this is not for councilman Holly Blair, so I wanna make that to everybody. This is not about Holly Blair. This is about moving our city forward. I, I, I know we have situations that we're dealing with, but it's time to move forward. What do Lemoore want? Not what hurt my feelings, but what does Lemoore really want? It's time to move forward, and, and when we, when I'm talking about moving forward, they, we want businesses down here. We want jobs down here. Let's talk about infrastructure. Okay, so, I wanted to put that out there before it's around six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine adjourned. We outta here.
So I think you don't need a ride to the school?
No, I guess I don't need a ride.